All right. Well, folks, we will officially go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, January 10th at 6:30 PM. Welcome, everyone. We're going to do the super quick roll call of who's here.
No, Chandler or Jack District 2.
Carly Hoover, they then pronouns District 1. So much, and welcome to all of our guests. I'll say it again a million times, I'm sure, but I am so incredibly glad to see all of you here. So thank you for being here, for spending your evening with us a little bit. It means so much. So thank you. So we like to start all of our meetings with just a reminder of how one of the ways that we commit to engaging with each other and as board members being present in this space. So these are from courageous conversations. So we commit and agree to staying engaged, experiencing discomfort and being vulnerable, speaking your truth and expecting and accepting non-closure. And we in the Tuckaway School Districts acknowledge that the land that we teach, collaborate, learn and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duwamish and Mukushu people, past and present, and honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duwamish and Mukushu tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility to the stewardship of this land. And we recognize the Duwamish and Mukushu people who have been living and working here since time immemorial. And I invite folks to stand. And oh, there is a flag. If you would like. All right. So before we approve the agenda, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda slightly and move item 8A, which is our amazing avid folks here, slightly up in the agenda before the board discussion. So we'll, I guess, create a new category, or I guess it could be in board discussion. All right, adding it before the board budget priorities discussion. So if I can get a motion to approve that amendment. Okay, all in favor? All right, it stands approved as amended. I think now we're going to our, so, so excited to be in a school. I know they're used to it, but for me, it's my first time not being in school, but being, having a board meeting here. I'm sure Walter's really excited for this tradition to continue. And I think it's so important for helping us as a board stay grounded in the work and you all. So, so thanks for hosting us.
Thank you. Welcome. On behalf of the students and staff, show all the wonderful, welcome here. We're happy to have you be the first stop, show up to do the first stop on your traveling road show. And, you know, we're excited about the start of the school year and I'm hoping you'll hear that from our folks, but yeah, it's, it's, it's been really great. We've had a real literacy focus at show all through this year. One of the great things about our avid program is the afterlife school. We focus on bigger and so literacy opponents are definitely part of that. But on top of that, you know, we're really working to build that culture of reading across the contents and in the classrooms. It's been great to see just the use of a library increase, I think, on circulation and student visitation. Where it's been before. And we've got some samples of student work in the back of the main grade language arts classes. I shared and there are, there are two pagers. They're basically a lot of most of the language arts class into a one pager and it's where if I'm reading and jotting, it's kind of the synthesis of my work. And these are around research, so they're larger, they're two pages. But you can kind of see students thinking as they've been doing the research. It's, it's been great to see the level of student engagement around literacy in the classroom. And we're really excited to see kind of the fruits of our labor as we're getting ready. We did irony math testing today and we're going to do irony assessments on Thursday, but we really, the students have worked really hard. And I think we're really going to see that reflected. But again, I'm, I'm excited for you to hear from our avid family. I'm glad that they're here. And I think that they're going to agree.
All right. So a little bit more business to do before we get that privilege. So we're going to move to public comments. So if anyone would like to give public comment, there are multiple ways to do so. If you are joining us online, you can raise your hand. Oh, and I just noticed that our student representative Dennis is here. So in a second, I'd love for Dennis to just say hello, introduce himself or hi, can you hear me Dennis? Oh, there he is. Okay, cool. No public comment. If you're joining us virtually and you'd like to give public comment, you can do so by raising your hands with that zoom function or tapping your name in the chat if you are here on person. And would like to offer public comment, there is a signup sheet here at the front. And I understand we received no written public comment prior to the meeting. Look at the list, but there's none written on there. Okay. All right. So seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Of course, there's always an opportunity at the end of the meeting to provide public comment thoughts as you reflected on our meeting today. So now we'll move to the reports, which is the recent equity and then health reports. Really mean.
Yeah, that's great. So for regular reports, I'm going to have that the board.
I just wanted to share with you that we have we hosted interviews yesterday for entirely construction approach. We interviewed two candidates and they both presented with different sets of strengths. They received the questions ahead of time and was asked to prepare PowerPoint in addition to answering questions. As we listed, they were working, they would be doing the terraces and construction approach. And the team has decided that even though they presented well of our strengths, we needed them to speak to the work that we are currently doing as a district that's close to being anteraces. And so we are going to and we are working with teachers out yes to show us naturally something that we and do.
I'd love to ask for those that are going to be talking later and now just a little bit so that folks can touch on this microphone. I can also move that if I need to. Easier. I'm curious, when you talk about doing things differently, are you talking about like the interview process itself? Maybe revising the job description? What, what are you thinking about?
Where would you posting?
Where was it? Okay.
We can have a wider if there's a pool is responding to our. I hope I did. So we intend to and we have received we received from the health department, the vector shots for SARS COVID and so we see that we now just have to distribute it distributed to the schools.
Those are the test kits, she means? Okay.
Yeah, we had some of those initially. We had a small sample of the test kits before it went out on whatever. Yeah, we had additional kits already pre-ordered for when return. Great. So those have come in and now each of these things happen. They do require an actual like reader of intestines. So they're not just saying they're not taking tests like some of the previous. We're hoping that they'll be helpful and maybe test for a different or discovery.
As far as like absences coming back from the holiday, any what, have there been a lot more absences or things seem to be fairly consistent with? Before break. All right. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, wonderful. So I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
All in favor? All right, all right, stands approved. So that brings us to the best part of the night. We're going to hear from you all. So just kind of give the floor away. Just make sure you talk loud and I, again, I can move that if you did. Say wherever you want, say wherever you want, whatever.
So I'm excited about the opportunity. This is the best kind of meeting about the opportunity. There's our staff and our students. Regarding avid, we met and talked about this. Everyone was extremely excited. You'll be hearing from some students, you'll be hearing from some alumni, you'll be hearing from our staff. And we have someone here also online. So I'll give you the names of the speakers. The first person that you will hear from is Miss Herta. Because who is considered our avid mom and you can tell me why she is avid. And then she will then introduce her speakers. Vicki, who is an eighth grader as well as they, they grew up in the neighborhood and have been they've also been in the program for three years. So we'll begin with Miss Herta and even know that they have three names.
We're going to be formal, formal.
Okay, all right.
Um, so part of what I'm going to share with you, I'm Erin Herta. I've been teaching avid. I don't know how many years. This is my fourth group of eighth grade. So that means I've done three cycle or four cycles. We have them from sixth through eighth grade. And then I, one of our avid teachers retired last year, so I took on the seventh grade avid as well. So now I have two avid classes, which means my family has grown bigger. We started avid sixteen years ago. We've gone up and down through funding. I think one year that even had funding completely, but Showalter never stopped the program. We continued working through it. We've had tutors. We do tutorials Tuesdays and Thursdays. Usually we have hired tutors who come in and help the students. We haven't had that in a while. And again, that's been up and down. We've like even had students come in and tutor before. But throughout the whole program, what it has brought to me and what it has brought to a lot of my students is a sense of community inside the school that lasts forever. Also, the skills that they learn, like note taking skills, things that when you go to college kind of shock you if you don't have experience with college, they get those skills here that then they, a lot of the graduated, graduated students will tell you, that's the one thing that they really hung on to with the note taking. I'm in my doctorate program and I've used avid strategies to help me manage my time. And I'm such a better student than I was when I went through college the first time. So, and, and I was a first generation college goer as well. So the avid strategies really have helped me. I think, you know, what we say in my classroom is like, once you have me, you always have me. So like you can't get rid of me. I have some students who are texting me today that dropped out of avid in the sixth grade and are just told me they got into college. And so it's a really strong bond that is created here at Showalter for sure.
My name is Victoria and I'm going to talk about how avid has benefited me and how it still is. I'm in avid because I've seen that it will help me and benefit me in college and in my educational future. And my evidence is my sisters, which I have three older sisters that were all in college. And they till this day use all the avid memories and skills in college. The avid community is one of like the most best things about being in avid because I know that I will be alone when it comes to college. I know that I'll have their support as well and their help whenever I have troubles. Without avid, I'm pretty sure I wouldn't know. But I wanted to be in the future. I want to be a children's doctor that helps kids cope with life through art. So I'm very thankful for avid.
Oh, well, hello, my name is David and I've been in avid for three years and avid has benefited me in lots of ways. First of all, first I wasn't organized. And when I joined avid, it showed me the different ways how I could be organized. And when I was in sixth grade, I didn't know how to use my time. So I would tell me how to use my time, like strategize, everything. And now I'm more organized and I'm thankful for that. And I hope it benefits me more in the future because I'm the first person in my family who comes into avid. And I will be the first one to go into college.
So now we will hear from
Thank you so much for, for hearing from us. I've participated in avid in some way for over twenty years, really, when I first started at a middle school in Highland School District. I helped with tutoring. So I've done like all aspects of avid. When I was here at Showalter, I helped with that field trips. And now at Foster, I'm actually the avid site coordinator and it's my first year doing it. And so there's a learning curve. And actually this year I have three new avid teachers. So the three of us, well, the four of us are learning together and we are so blessed to have Eric Hall as the guy who's guiding us and helping us understand what we need to do. So I really love avid because like Miss Herta said, it is really a family and it's really nice too because the, they all had Miss Herta. And, and so she was taking selfies with them. And so that just is a testament to the program. Not that they were all in avid in middle school and they will share like their experience at it, but just to give you some feedback about how avid really is supportive of students for the class of 2022. A hundred percent of the avid students completed their FASDA or WASDA. And we're on track this year with this graduating class for about it as well. Actually, we're really like ahead for the whole senior class, if I'm being really honest. And then a hundred percent of the avid kids who graduated last year are attending some sort of post-secondary, whether it's two-year trade school or four-year. And they actually are the ones who received the most scholarships than the rest of their graduating class. I personally, because I am the college career first, I really want all of my seniors to be receiving scholarships. So I'm going to really push for that. This year, we already have two seniors that have received $5,000 scholarships. We're like, we're in the process right now. A lot of our students have already heard back from like Western WSU Central. A lot of them are holding out for UW, but they've all been accepted to really great schools. At one minute. Field trips, we went up to Western with my seniors, but I'm going to turn it over to my juniors because I'm going to hear from them more than you. You know, I have personal.
I'm just being so junior, I've watched high school avid, avid since the sixth grade. And what I've carried my, all, all my years of avid is that I've always wanted the support. I've always wanted. So as when I want to go to college and I always wanted support. And all those years, I've always had that support, you know? I also developed like habits of, you know, staying organized and that helped me throughout and still to this day still does. And besides that, it also like what, like what the rest of the people said. It also creates another family, which also helps that support. And you know, it'll always come along with me. And what I've noticed was I always treated middle school and high school as a first and the last stage, first stage of middle school being first stage being just, just gaining the idea, gain different ideas of what you want to do when you're done with high school. And then high school being, I consider the final stage of like knowing what you want to do after high school and being prepared for that. And being an avid student, that really helped me all the support that, that I've needed. And I'm pretty sure that goes for everybody too. So I think one of the big things is probably the support they get as that.
My name is Angelica and I want to talk about how avid has impacted me, does it affect you? So I joined avid in ninth grade and throughout this past years, I felt, I, without being avid, I felt like I had a great support system. My teachers are always checking in on my grades and come doing in each class. And we also learned a lot, we learned a lot about how I learned a lot more about college, like college departments and applications and financial aid. And I don't think I would have known about all of that if I hadn't adopted an avid. And so I think that was something really impactful that got, got him from beginning of the program.
Thank you.
I joined avid because I wanted to all right, yeah, I joined avid this year because I wanted to take accountability with my mother that they haven't changed. Be determined for something and also responsibility. I feel like avid in general gives me a boost in all five of those categories. Cause I feel like with those five traits, I can build off and grow as a person, grow as a student. And with, like you, with other sneakers said, it's a family. So I feel like I have people around me that support me and want to see me achieve. So I want to be around that and also want to help, you know, the younger students they want to choose. So in avid right now, help them, give them tips. Make them help, help them change, help you grow, help you get better. That's all, that's all that was doing.
Thank you. If you didn't connect these students and didn't know that they started at different times, you would have thought that, I thought that Angelica and well, I knew she was in there since sixth grade, but I would have assumed that they were all in avid, starting in middle school, just because of the way they carry themselves. So. Yeah, I tried to get running into avid in all of middle school and you can ask him. And then I recruited his little brother. Can I interject one thing before the next guest speaker? Because I forgot our wonderful team. And we have, we have avid Excel here for over ten years, which is helping our language, long-term language learners. And that is with our lovely Jesse Cuadra. And Sonia is our college and career and she helps plan all of our field trips and big events with career planning. And then Claire Poppins took over as our coordinator and has rocked it for not even knowing what the program was to like being the leader at it. And then Dan Holt are sixth grade avid. So I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure that they were seen.
Thank you for doing that.
I mean, I would introduce you to my folks, but I don't know. We have one online.
Okay. Hi, my name is Carolina. I am a political district girl and I graduated in class of 2015. That's a long time ago. I just thought about that right now. But I feel like I haven't really, okay. I'll talk about it, but I'm just going to so what the avid program has done for me is that the, I think it was the second year of my high school, no. College. Actually, I was, I worked as a tutor for avid. So I was in the middle schools and I got to see that. And then I also worked in the high schools as well. So it really helped me in supporting the pathway that I wanted to pick. I was one of the students that didn't stick to their original plan in college. So I was working at the YMCA and then I also worked here as a tutor. And then I think that one thing that I really took away from avid is the networking skills that you get. Because it really pushes you to step out of your comfort zone and to be comfortable, being uncomfortable. And I think that you also get to meet lifelong friends. I actually met my best friend in avid. I wasn't in avid in middle school, but I feel like if I wasn't avid in middle school, it would have helped me further those relationships. And keep maybe more friends. I don't have one best friend and post-high school, that's pretty impressive. I'm going to say that. But I feel that apart from that that avid has also encouraged my younger siblings and also supported my family's dreams and aspirations of following the American dream. That's it.
Thank you so much.
Online.
Akua, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you see me? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Akua. I graduated from Foster in 2018. And then I went on to pursue a bachelor's in public health and health equity. And currently I'm in my first year of my master's program at UW. And I'm studying epidemiology. I participated in avid in seventh and eighth grade in Miss Herta's avid class. And I was also a school board rep. So shout out to all the student reps. When I think about avid and I resonate with what everyone has said so far, I think the main thing that sticks out to me is the mentorship piece and the community aspect. And again, resonating with what everyone has said, as first generation students, oftentimes we are the first ones in our family. And we have to jump over so many hurdles and lots of barriers to navigate this education system. And avid really reaffirmed my value as a student. And one incident that stands out to me was, I think this was in eighth grade, if I remember correctly, we had our tutorial. And there was an avid tutor named Miss Smiley, who pulled me aside one day during tutorials. And she was like, Akua, you are such a bright student. You, just keeping you, you're such an amazing student. You're so bright. And I just stopped and I just started crying in front of, in front of her. And although it was a very small little moment, it was very transformational for me because she affirmed my value and she kind of reaffirmed the fact that I am meant to be where I am and that I can continue whatever passions I have, whatever dreams I have. And just because, you know, I may not see myself in the college students that I'm with, I still do deserve to be in that seat. And I know it's a similar experience for you all too. So, thank you. Good to see you all.
Both of those kids go to my church.
Well, um, thank you so much. I guess I'm curious, um, from like a do we ask questions or do you save that? Because I guess we moved it. So if we have any questions, we ask them now. Any questions?
I just wanted to emphasize something. This hundred percent of avid students being met Batta, that's a huge, huge deal because the, if you complete the Batta, the probability is you're going to go on to something and hundred percent. Now, you compare that with, you know, the fact that the whole of our numbers for last year is like sixty-four percent. And, and we're doing really good. This district has always been good and getting Batta. And so, you know, it's, it's a hundred percent is, is a phenomenal number. Really is important for the future, you know, success of the students. And so I guess my only, you know, I was looking to ask a question. So how many avid students are here on the show? There's about a hundred, about a hundred. The question becomes why that we should go to the whole school? And I know we've talked about that before. And I'm, I'm kind of curious on that one, you know, how much? And I know we talked about that before and I'm, I'm kind of curious on that one, you know, how much of that is um budget, you know, dependent? And because I think, you know, if we could put together a story uh with, you know, the kind of success that we've heard plus. Maybe some test scores, because I've never seen Avid differentiated by plus score, which would be really interesting, I think. I mean, I would imagine it's even good. And and then that package and, you know, and then figure out how much money you need for whatever to go to the pool. Let's go shop that package, you know, down to Taylor Ranch or whatever, because that's a phenomenal success.
Hey, we have, we've been working with Showalter for a very long time, those full way. So um, I think we're like, we're very close to like, we have finder for every student and planer for every student. We use those skills with all of our students. So I think that that's like, since Will was here, um. We were, we've been on that path when she was our Avid director to to bring it to the way to try to get it to the way to foster and them.
So then the question is, what's, you know, what's, what's the constraint? So then, then we need to translate that into, so how much? So that we can go, you know, for grant or whatever and say, this is what we need to be with and see these kind of results.
And the board, you've been looking forward to yourself. Yeah, what happens enough to, thank you all. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, I also think it's just, uh, again, so much gratitude. Um, I'm, I'm about a year, I'm two months into the board now and, you know, we get. These reports that just have so much information, but there's like not always a story to it and a face to it. And so um, this was so important. Um, and so, thank you. Um, I think one of the things that I was really grateful to hear too is just this um. Uh, idea of the belonging that you feel in this program. Um, and with the folks that are, that you surround yourself with and we have something to learn, I think it's a district around that. Yeah.
Uh, as I was like, so I wanted to give my time, right? Proud of them, but since Avid Schoolwide came up, you should know that we are certified as an Avid Schoolwide site here at Showalter. As of last year, so I'm really proud of that. And we are hoping to grow our efforts school-wide with an offering of successful development opportunities here in-house for our teachers. Um, when we have breakout sessions on staff duty days. We offer tips each week and are a good communicator and we have sent many of our staff members, I think about thirty-five in the school, to. Avid Summer Institute, which is a great way to review Avid's ways and find a lot of ways to integrate it into your classroom. And we'd always love to send more. So that's a great place that you could direct any funds that you find. Staff members to Avid Summer Institute and uh, but always because our team's drafting, whether it's funds or not, we're going to be. So then if you have any more questions about our program, you can totally reach out. Like I said, the students are what's so important for our time together, but we have staff and stories we could share all day long. So just ask. And thank you for your time.
And by the way, this uh, Summer Institute in Seattle, Southern Seattle, because that was, we say, we say, we used to have to send people down to San Diego or something. And we can do a whole lot more people with a whole lot. That might be because they moved to having the Summer Institute in Seattle. So that's great.
We had people over here. Actually.
Yeah, I sure wish I'd had this in, in high school because my study habits never really developed. That's probably why I didn't finish my doctorate, Erin.
Well, they also keep me going because they know I'm working on the doctorate and I share where I'm at and then they push me to get it done.
Good.
Actually, I remember, I know if everyone does to see is how many Avid students then get a degree. We were a couple of them here. Um, because, you know, my place is in the old, that have students that go to get into college, you know, do not complete. And I think, you know, there's all the things they talked about here, the skills about note taking, about support systems. I mean, those are all typically why students don't get through. And so, you know, it just, it's tailor-made for success.
Thank you. All right. Um, great. Well, we're going to move now to board budget priorities. Thanks again so much. You can totally keep hanging out. You also don't have to. If you didn't sign in though, please still do that. Um. Okay, we're going to take a two-minute recess to fix some tech things and sign in if you didn't get to do that.
That one's not working. Yeah. Especially getting that down. With a little bit more. So Jen, you just have to, oh, that's why it wasn't plugged in.
Wasn't working.
What are you getting there?
Uh, sorry, I think I'm a weirdo. I'm actually.
Pretty smart. It's on the meeting and then I saw.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Yeah, it's actually a month ago and um. Thank you. I know she told me what you and Lonnie are doing. I forgot what she told me Adam's doing. Nice whole.
Yeah.
I know for everyone else.
I shouldn't have been giving the. I don't know if it's quite been two minutes. I don't know how much it matters. Are we okay to move, uh, move onward?
Your things.
We'll get in.
Wow, is that in there?
Dennis is famous.
Oh, did you even get?
Sorry, we're just admiring Davis Dennis's fame uh in the Waza catalog thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, okay, so we're going to move to our board budget priorities. And I know I uh said this to our Dr. Burry Shade and Dr. Dino um earlier, but I am so grateful for this. And I know, of course, Miss Birdsong, you just were there, but I said, thank you so much for just all of the context, I think, around this, um, these board priorities. It gave me a lot of useful information about um really how to have an effective conversation about board priorities, right? If we don't know how it's being spent, how it's useful or how it's not, um, then that kind of makes it hard to continue conversations. So thank you. That was really, really helpful for me. Um, so of course, this is kind of like an annual process, right? Reviewing these board budget priorities um to really help set the stage. Um, as Miss Birdsong continues the endless cycle of budget development and approval. Um. So, yeah, I'm not really sure uh if there's any particular place someone wants to start or if anyone has.
I think typically in the past, we've taken a look at the board budget priorities to see if those are. Still some of the ones that the board wants to continue to focus on. This is just an initial, you know, conversation as we're saying, this is a kind of an ongoing process. Couple of months where this will pop off from time to time. As we do several other uh aspects of planning for next year. So I think sometimes in the past, uh, there may have been a new priority or somebody thought of something that was in there. But it typically starts with like how, how do we feel these have been? And then any comments that people want to have. And again, you're not adopting change tonight. It's just that initial look to get some feedback and then anything else that you might need.
I think we've done a pretty good job of getting a lot of these launched. Um, still in the baby steps on some of them.
I want to do just questions.
Yeah, yeah.
The first one here was this um, Aaron, um Advisory Committee. I was interested and said, they shared and students spend too much time trying to remember their ID. He didn't when they're planning to get food. I thought we, food was free for everybody, so why are we bothering with that?
Correct. Food is still uh free for everyone, but we still have to keep counts for reporting food measures.
They need to classify their particular.
Yes, for the count, yeah. Yes. I mean, one of two ways, right?
Yeah.
Either you can do the tally sheet.
Yeah.
Which, you know, electronic is probably better, but um, or they plug in their number, but students don't even be.
Those numbers are long. I wrestled with that. And so I guess, are we going to come up with some easy way for them to scan something?
Yes, we're, I'm working with Mr. Watt.
Okay.
On trying to streamline the process.
Yeah, right.
Dave, where are you? Where is, where are you working at now?
I'm on page one under the, so there's uh staff appreciation and then the next one, community.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
And I'm in the description, so I just, yeah, should make that a lot. He's actually. Um, run into this, that's a view when in the robotics class, they're trying to uh log in and remember their ID. And of course, you know, most of the camera is probably these. That's almost like, did we have a, you know, district wide, I think most high schools, don't they just give the. You know, some kind of uh card or something and they just, I don't know. Anyway, so it sounds like you're working on that. I guess the Raisin 941, which is the next one down. Do we, so do we have any concrete, more concrete plans with PSCSD, I guess, where.
So this is the third year of the initial three-year plan that we have with them. And I think the parts going into the spring will be, what are the continued efforts that you want to continue to work with them?
Beyond, beyond the three years?
Yeah, yes. So um, you know, I, I think the last three years have been really helpful in having them and it's kind of shifted a little bit too. We had been working a little more closely with Eileen Maschino from P S M D S D. And then this year um with Mr. Brad Brown and Mr. Anthony Brown. Then we've been working also with doctors for show art and analysis. So that was a shift also within the PSCSD that they were looking at and some of the development that we're looking to do. Um, additionally, I think the plan was also to be consistent with a lot of professional development, like from the board to um, to dedicated teachers. So it's pretty consistent. So I think some of those efforts will probably want to continue on. And probably um, as we think about, as Dr. Borish gave the update about a couple of positions that we've been trying to hire. Really continue with, with that support to get that launched into a uh really successful. On ways so that we can have that integrated into our professional development, into our um classroom practices, all of those pieces that we're working on. So I think, I think we'll know a little bit more as Dr. Borish was talking about, like, what are our next steps? Um, Dr. Canals actually was sitting in on that interview the other day. So he saw that and is going to be able to give some pretty good guidance.
So we're thinking, thinking about two, two of these positions that was looking. How, how that's, how's that going to be sustained?
Well, that's what, one of the things that we're looking at. So we know we're looking at the S R.
Yeah.
Funds for the this year, next year, but then it's like, how do we integrate that into a sustainability?
So that seventy-five thousand dollar budget is not necessarily for positions. Um, are there any sort of salaries attached to that or is that mostly for like the professional development, working with the P S E S D like around the interview stuff? Okay.
And also I think you have staff and.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. But no positions attached to it uh right now.
So I kind of wonder in this section, if, if, if we kind of solve the created learning labs. Because now it's really being more recognized by um CTE or CLO, whichever that is. Um, and if, if we could take that off of a priority. Um, and add a curriculum council. We don't, we've been talking about getting a curriculum council together. And it seems to go really well under this label, focus on engaging students. Um, and as far as I know, we don't have that anywhere in our. Our, whatever the priorities. So.
We do have a curriculum council. So, um, but I think if you want to highlight that as an area to make sure that we're looking at that. But certainly something we can do, like Dr. Borish is overseeing the. Implementation and shifts and making sure we have people on the curriculum council and how that impacts, especially obviously curriculum adoption and other items.
Yeah. I just think it's a, a, a real important part of this goal to make sure our curriculum is adding to the, is getting us there.
So um, I believe this will start in January. So I have, I'm going to be rolling out something this week to share.
Is the, was the curriculum council, so I mean, I, I think why there might be a feeling that it hasn't, maybe it just hasn't been as active, particularly recently. Is that, is that an accurate assessment? Okay. So right now you're kind of picking it back up and getting it re, like resetting the stage of, okay, you're cool.
And I think, yeah, I guess, well, I would like to keep the creative learning that's on there until. You know, because there's a few statements in here that will be part of the future until it's actually done. Um, but I also agree with the curriculum council, particularly as regards when it relates to risen equity because. Getting um, uh, you know, the eternal question that I already asked students, do you see yourself in the curriculum? And that's been an ongoing issue. And so I think it's, yeah, really important to make sure that we have an engaging curriculum for students. In, in all the different places that happens. Uh, so, yeah, I think that I would completely support having that as a priority.
I think the easy part is coming. Seeing yourself in the curriculum, it's about the adults that are presenting the curriculum as well.
Yeah, culturally responsive, you know, but so, yeah, it's, it's obviously multifaceted. Curriculum is part of it. How the adults work is another part of it.
Yeah, I'm interested even just around that topic. I, I assume that'll be something that comes up in our cover early, maybe I hope it does in our presentation on Saturday. Um, because I was literally just reading that chapter um in Street Data today around like how we often use curriculum as a way to be like, oh, great, great. Let's, if we implement this curriculum, everything will get better. Um, whereas like there's so much more to than that, you could have no curriculum and see progress. Um, because of the way that, you know, the instructional um professionals are in, in their acting. So I'm, I'm curious to even dive in a little bit more on Saturday to that idea. Um, but of course, I mean, I think a curriculum is necessary and important as well, right? Sort of, but it's, it's.
Yeah, and I will take, I guess I look at curriculum more than just the textbooks that you buy. But it is also the way it's presented and, you know, we keep, I keep. Bringing in the project-based learning stuff. And that's a whole different kind of curriculum. And I, I would love to have us exploring that more because I think that's often more engaging for students. Um, and I don't know that we. I think some teachers do it well and I think others um maybe don't understand it as well. So I don't know if that could go in here somewhere. Yeah.
And or maybe just in, I don't want to like override, like not trying to, but also more just like innovative ways of doing things too. Because it may not be that project, it could be like master base learning or, you know, other components of that. But maybe just like more innovative or creative ways of instruction, perhaps?
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
That's, that's a lot of what the creative learning lab is or exactly.
I know, but we need it, don't we need a broader than just that one hour, three times a week?
I'm saying that's. Step along, along the, along the journey to getting there, yeah. The other, other thing and uh going to the next item on those, they're designing that kind of acceleration, um, you know, how did.
Yes.
My question is, you know, the same one, you know, what, what's preventing us from doing that? You know, uh, school-wide, that's your older. And it sounded like the answer was dollars.
And looking for some comment about bringing up the elementarys.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it is. I think it is available. Yeah, I, yeah, I need to look at that, but, but I mean, in terms of. You know, the testimonials that we've heard from students over years, over years, um. That's, you know, part of the engage, engaging is a multifaceted topic, but the collective being part of the family, feeling supported, all that belonging, you know. That's a big part of all that.
You know, we often, I think, tend to like start things, you know, focus a lot on secondary. I know that's a comment that's come up before, but I'm, I'm wondering if like, what if we thought first about implementing it. Across all schools at the elementary level, because if you think about it, then you're really creating this pipeline. From elementary where you're starting to even get their buy-in to what Avid is about. And then by middle school, you're automatically likely going to increase participation because you've gotten, you started to like plant those seeds in elementary. I almost wonder if, like. What that would look like to maybe even start and prioritize that level.
I think we'd have to look at their, um, their elementary. Implementation to see if it says, I, I think they started at the secondary. It started at, okay, so I mean. I just want to look at, see, make sure, and I'm sure it's around somewhere, and just to check and make sure that, that we. If we go down that, we just kind of do it well.
And let's really push to get tho, that data that takes the sixth grader that goes into Avid. What's their I ready or their S B A? And how is that different their senior year than the ones who did not go through with Avid? Um, I mean, I would look at the, the growth, not the, just the data point, but. Um, are we seeing multiples with the added kids? And we just don't have that data. Davis asked for it.
Well.
See if it's, see if it's there.
There's a correlation, but I'm looking at our student representative, he was not an avid. Would they give us a different data set?
Yes, still, you know. Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. There would be individuals that would do that, and then we need to go back and explore. How did he do so good?
Well, first, I would, you know, the, the original intention was to focus on students that are kind of in the middle. They weren't the, um, you know, the top students or the necessarily the lowest students, but they were kind of in that middle group.
I didn't think to interview them, but yeah.
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 Oh, they saw this?
Yeah. And so to say that it's necessarily. I mean, the students that are being suc- successful on their own for other reasons. I can't see it hurting them, but. Yeah, it sounds like, but.
Oh, um, talking about Avid similarly, I was, I'm wondering about the high cap program. Um, that you guys implemented. Could you just like give a quick overview of it and how the students are responding to that program?
And you say, we have students who are in the program at this point, and what I'm looking to see is the difference. The I ready, their assessments will be, and I ready assessments happening. Now until they're my first, so I want to see what the difference is with our students who are in the high cap program versus those without. Um, and then I'll be able to respond with more intentionally. With more data, more teachability.
I'm interested in, um, again, still under this design and implementing academic acceleration, you talk about. High school level co-taught classes, um, and my understanding that's going on at math in particular, because that's what we're talking about a lot.
There's, there's classes in math, there's classes in science, and there is history class that is also to co-talk.
And co-ta with. When I heard it, talked about it now, it was like bringing in a special red teacher for support. Is it that or is it something more than that?
Something more than that.
Okay. Just general second teacher?
A general section teacher.
Okay.
If there is a. Teacher with a special endorsement, I would need to look into that. But right now, from what I've seen when I visited, it was a general.
Okay, I'm really interested in that, what kind of results we see from that, because I'm, actually, just a few days ago, I was making the, um. Argument that, that co-teaching is, is one of the ways that, you know, we can change, close some of these gaps, you know, because like there's a, the middle school. And that's going to cost more money, obviously. And so if you can give me some, if we get some good data about, you know, here's the difference. That kind of thing can make, then, you know, so. Give us some more money so we can do it everywhere, kind of thing. So I'm really interested in how that goes in that, because I know we change, there's a fairly significant change in how they're teaching that at Boston in terms of. You know, having two kind of separate classes, pre-algebra and algebra versus putting it into one, and then the supports in that one class, so. Really interested in how that goes. I was looking at, so had the long list of all the. Secondary services, mental health, all that, all the different organizations that really. Um, can potentially draw upon. I was, I heard, um. Actually, I was listening to the Superdaddy Public Profession, Chris Ray Bell, um, he gave his. State of Education this morning, or this couple of days ago, and, um, he talked about. Behavioral health navigators at the E S D's, as one of the, are we, do we have any awareness of that?
We do have some point at the secondary.
Okay.
As students are aware of, and they can make a point to see.
Well, this is, I, my, my sense of what this was, that, that at the E S P, there's supposed to be some person over there that will hold the district's. Roundup behavior and health supports. Okay, not aware of that. Okay, I just curious, and maybe something new, I don't know, but he was touting it as a great thing that was going on, but.
So, and so what I saw yesterday at K S B U was the behaviorist and the behavioral tax.
Okay.
And so, I mean, those are in the mentors, right? Okay. But that, that isn't.
Yeah, there's something different. The E S D support for districts, but yeah, period. And also, as looking at this list, do we also have? Um, can we at one point get some support from schools out of Washington?
Yes, for our, our city program.
For what?
Our city, sorry, the acronym. Sorry, yes, we do use school routes and watch of our refugee grant.
Oh, the refugee grant? Okay.
Directly with, um.
Diary.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That might be one that, that we work with them, and then also, um, invested. You get money.
We can invest that it's not. Huge amount of money.
Yeah.
We utilize that or, um, I don't want to get the wrong title, but. Julie and sharing that.
Quality engagement coordinators, yeah.
Which works directly with that as well as, um, this will offer.
Yeah.
Can you jump in really quickly and bring us, maybe just slightly back, just want to comment on the social emotional learning support for staff and students? Um, still, I think definitely a party for me, but I think even more specifically, and we've had many conversations, and we've had many conversations about this, but like. I don't want to necessarily say a universal screener, because that, that to me would like. That, that defines it too much, but something that we're utilizing district-wide. So aside from these amazing like ways in which, you know, sound discipline. I know their work, they do great things about how we're responding, you know, to, um, to behaviors and things. Um, but you know, what is like our streamlined district-wide approach to behavior too, um, and or social emotional learning? Um, so again, a system or something, um, that is consistent to some degree, as it can be district-wide. Um, again, more than just a curriculum, more than just a, a training or two. Um, yeah, I'm happy to talk more about that later. I'm sorry, but it's.
Looking through the, the next, that kind of, I guess, family and community engagement. So we talked about a while ago, when we're, um. Hiring the community, our communications. Person. I mean, some of that, the working with CBOs that. Happening, not happening.
Community-based organizations.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I don't know what.
Well, we were just, we talked about this a while ago, it was to kind of enhance, you know, the communication and. Uh, get more of them, work better with, you know, the different. Community organizations that are outside of the school district. So whether it's through communications, maybe. Making them or and or us aware of some possible connections that could happen, you know, that, that whole thing. Sounds like you're. I don't know if you view that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Um, I think I would be more.
Well, there are community based organizations out there that maybe we have no connection with, that, you know. You've been able to at least initiate.
I don't know. I, there are people that are mutually, it's not, I don't know, necessarily. Yeah, so it's hard for me to gauge that.
At one time, we had a little relationship with the teacher. Just them now, and now it's pretty non-aggressive. It would be nice to rejuvenate that because they were a huge support for us.
It seems like what we've asked career to do so far is just make sure that everything that's happening is communicating. And people are communicating with each other kind of within the district, but getting information out to the community. And I haven't heard us asking you to connect the community into the schools. So. So that's maybe the next step, or maybe not your job, or.
I would, and I think when there's some specific needs, then it's like, oh, okay, let's work this, this group over there, but it's. That's easier for me around my head around, they're just, oh, just go out there, make connections. It's sort of like, oh, we need this, who are we gonna talk to?
Right.
Yeah.
And that one time, you see, you contacted us. Some city council and schoolwork people about doing things since they have housed here, they'd really like to be more involved here. And then cover them. So that never, but they were very interested in working with them.
But not the message you, you're seeing.
Well, no, no, I just, I've been looking.
Easy, yeah.
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 They're the, they're the.
I got a thing. Teachers credit.
I think another thing, the benefit to, you know, engaging with community-based organizations is there are so many, um, small organizations, large organizations that are doing great work. For young people in our city, and so it's really finding ways in which we can leverage partnerships, right? That takes certain burdens off of us as a district, actually, and leans into the skill set. Um, of these community-based organizations, they're doing great work and are already probably have relationships with families, um, and, and students. Um, and so it's more about figuring out who's already connected to our students in various ways.
Right.
Um, and how we can, um, again, leverage those within our district. I mean, and I think that's been more of an ask. We have specifically asked around that a little bit, I think it's been more to, um, to Dr. Herndon, um, thinking about how we're really strengthening the relationships we already have. And then, yeah, I think to your point, the next stage phase is maybe seeking, um, some external folks that maybe we don't have relationships with yet. I'm saying help me partner.
And now hopefully, the district engagement specialists, they have a post provider thing.
Right.
Will provide your meetings, yeah. And each month, yeah, they, they connect with people who. Different community-based organizations that are doing things, and then they share out what they're doing. Um, so would that be different?
That sounds like the same. I wonder if there's just some way that we can close the loop, uh, so that we can get some information about that too. Yeah, someone more visibility. Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, that sounds really like, I, I had no idea that that was happening until I read it in your answer here. Um, so that, that's really, yeah, so I think just more transparency around that.
Yeah, and it, it could just be a question sometime that the staff gets asked, what community organizations do you work with beyond your classroom? And you might end up with a list of a hundred things that then at least we need to be communicated with all of those folks in. And see how those relationships develop.
So which I think particularly in really, you know, um, your relationships. You know, we would be mindful of that, we have district relationships as well, so that if there isn't, if there's transition, right, at the building level. There's still some of that connection, that relationship on a larger scale.
Yeah.
The other thing that kind of ties. Communication, some of the school activities that are going on, like in the event, you know, the theater group is going to be up there and. And getting that, you know, for me, it's always particularly interesting to get out, it's all those senior housing projects somewhere. Because those folks, I've seen them come down in mass for like a rainier symphony. We have to get them down. For some of our activities, we make them aware of it. I think they would probably do that, and they, yeah, and they are. The big thing, they are voters, and they love that voters coming into our school, you know, watching the kids do good things. Um, all right, we can talk about, yeah, I guess I need to hear what's going on with the Osprey camp.
Yeah, so at this point, there's nothing going on with Osprey camp. Um, they. There are some considerations for another experience. I will share that. In October, there was an ask for us to connect with Osprey, and the deadline was October fifteenth, was to connect with Osprey camp. When I responded on October tenth, they said they had given our spot away. Um, and since then, I have asked. One of the high school teachers who is very passionate about outdoor education to work with, um, the elementary schools. And has done a phenomenal job in terms of connecting with and going to visit different places. Sitting down, meeting with the elementary schools, um, those who were willing to participate. Um, and at this point, we are looking to make a decision with the fifth grade team and that teacher. So that we can move forward on setting the alternative outdoor experiences.
So was, so the, the intention was to do Osprey camp this year?
Yes.
So is the intention to then connect next year? Okay, okay. And then in the interim, we're gonna try and work out some other, uh, outdoor education activity.
Yes, so next year, if it's not Osprey, it will be an outdoor.
I guess I, I guess I want to. If you haven't seen us right now, but you have, it's, you know, it's been a tradition around here for many years, and obviously it got discontinued during the total thing, but. There's a number of, um, aspects to it that go beyond. I know the emphasis is kind of been, you know, out of science education. But that particular experience is so much more than just the science education. Uh, so, and you can, there, we have people around here who've been to it before that you can connect here. Kristen, Kristy Johnson of K S B U, and you know, there's, there's a lot of, um. Arts involved in it, you know, performance arts, song singing, there's connecting, uh, this, you know, one of the things we. Was, we always send all our fifth graders from all the schools there, so they connect with each other before they go to show off there, so they're whole new sets of friends, because they go in cabin groups. And then the high school kids, you know, their kids come in and serve as the, as the counselors for those, and the dynamic between the fifth graders and the high school kids is, is great. And I forget they're getting, um, learnings, you know. And I forget they're getting learnings, you know, leadership experience at that time. And of course, then also we get like all the fifth grade teachers from all the schools go down there. And so they get to, you know. Out of professional community essentially on the spot. So I just, I want to be, I know the kind of the discussion has been around, you know, the outdoor science aspect to it, which is important. And, you know, it's great if we can get something for them this year, but I don't want to, I don't want to, I want to be really cognizant of, you know, next year, get getting back into that program because I think it's been a really good. Program for beyond just, just the science.
And so my, my wondering is. Would they be open to our high school students learning how to be leaders?
Oh, they do. That's part of their program. Yeah, every year when we did it, you know, before it typically happens in April day, something like that. You know, weeks before. The high school kids go down there and get the training about how to do it. So, yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's been going on for years and it's it's a really powerful thing, same experience for both our high school kids and our, and our elementary schools. So. Anyway, so I just ask you. As you think about that, and I know, you know, I think Mr. Colacho has not seen that program either. So I just want to make, you know, and like I said, there are several people around here who know that program really well, so make sure that they're getting. Involved in the discussion about it because it's a really, that particular group that puts on their camp is. Has a really. I think powerful experience.
I think in the, just to kind of comment, I mean, I think the outdoor education piece that you're speaking to is an important element of that. Beyond just the science education.
Right.
But I will say there are a lot of camps around the state that different districts go to that have that same element. So. For us, it's really about what works best as a bonding experience for the students, for the staff. Coordinates well with the high school program so they can do what they need to do. So I think that the key priority is the outdoor education, whether it's Osprey or something else. I realize, you know, there's a long tradition of Osprey, which is a great camp too. So I just want to make sure it sounds like keeping that outdoor education. Slash experience apart. One, I remember when we were, but it's prioritization a couple of years ago, that went off and then it's like, that one's got to be back on there. So. We did that only after a year. And I know that's, you know, I still remember the time I went through sixth grade, man, sixth grade camp, there's.
Yep.
Those junior highs and same, you know, we were in cabins, you learn all this stuff and. So I think making sure we have that outdoor education as a priority is one, we're not suggesting come off there. And that budget amount seems is probably in line with most camps.
Well, and plus the fact that we now have essentially the advanced from the state.
Right.
Or because of the grant program described exactly.
Yeah.
And I'm not, yeah, I'm not attached to Osprey in particular, as long as whatever has all those different components that Osprey.
Yeah, I, I. I'm with you, Dave. I think the overnight experience, the community experience, the meeting with the kids from the other elementaries. I think it's. It hits on all the right points. And if we can do it someplace else, fine, but I think, I think the three day, three one day field trips. That's great, but it's not the same. It can't replace this.
The other thing I tried to note like that is particularly when they do a console, cancel and ejector, which is a run by a Jewish organization and. There's an issue, since we have a lot of Muslim students, sometimes parents get concerned about, you know, the eating situation and pork and all that and. Jewish have this similar, so I know we've had, we've been able over the years to get a lot of the Muslim parents to send their kids down to that. You know, they're more comfortable. So anyway, there's just a whole, I just, I just want to make sure we're considering all the factors.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
And the the idea that there's a potential funding source that we could tap into could potentially then. Free up some of these monies for something else. That's great.
It is concerning that we have kind of two schools lined up and one school not. So that's going to take a little work.
But we do have the.
Yeah.
So I was looking at the the next section dual language. I'm just curious, they're talking about. Classroom curriculum. I wonder, can we kind of get started on that, what are using extra dollars? Reload the curriculum cost that we have.
And I wouldn't need to see it within the grant, if it speaks to the curriculum piece, I think it's just building a program.
Yeah, so that to work the grants, the dual language specific grants.
Yeah, well, there's that.
Yeah, but.
Which is, which is fine. Just if there's, there's other costs that we think we might have that are upfront costs that are not covered by the grant. Can we get extra dollars before they go away?
One of the nice things is that in our previous purchase, lots of. Spanish literacy.
Yeah.
Materials were purchased.
Okay.
For our first year of kindergarten, at the very, we have something to start with kindergarten. We're just in the process of. Determining what's called our language allocation, which content will be taught in which languages and then will know what materials.
Yeah.
Spanish and the nice part about the elementary math pilot is both of them come in Spanish. And so we're going to be buying new math materials anyway, and so that would like, it's we, instead of buying. All a hundred, let's say, books in English, we would buy seventy five.
And then they're using the same curriculum, which is great.
Yeah, which is always the ideal.
Yeah.
And so as we continue to adopt curricula, that would be, it will become like a key part of why. So there's a lot of pieces that need to be grating together.
Right.
Right now.
But isn't put under the next one, the high quality prepaid elementary schools. You say that all three, all preschool classrooms with waiting lists. Seen that there's actually a waiting list, which is not surprising. I expect the. You know, approximately how big that waiting list is.
I don't know exactly how long. We just actually yesterday launched a couple of our half day kids to a different full day. Program.
Yeah.
And our full day programs have really long wait lists because most families would rather have their friends go to family than half day.
Right.
And. All the head start and be kept by, I think, twenty twenty six, we all, we have to go full day anyways.
Yeah.
And so we'll be starting the process of determining when we're going to move kind of in that direction. But that's really what the most families are looking for.
Yeah. And is our constraint on this primarily space?
Yeah, it would be space because in, and you can't just turn any.
Yes, right.
It's having a room and then having a room that is appropriately outfitted. So they all have to have their own bathrooms.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, I think coming back to that on early learning, space, space, space. So. That's why I'm always trying to keep my air out. Different opportunities for the city potentially, wherever we can find some space.
Every year they ask if you want to have squads to their program.
Yeah.
They're willing to do that.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I think in the state's doing a pretty good job of funding the operating costs, but you got to have the space.
And we did have a conversation about incorporating preschools in the housing, the senior housing. Which would be such a great asset for both populations. And it's.
Was that a city initiative or was it a district?
I think it was just talked about, touched upon and.
That, that space issue is pretty universal.
Yeah.
Every place. And there's never enough space. Typically, the leasing per square foot is more than a lot of early learning spaces can afford because it's you by the market rate, why they can fit space in a building, so better. But it's an important part of what we're trying to do. It's one of the, we have increased our free game role by adding things like bus sits now and trying to add more spaces. So. We're trying to do that, want to continue to do that. So. So it's an important piece, even if we have it or not. The other thing we really want to do is make stronger connections that are okay.
Right.
Within the city.
Right.
Yeah.
There's so many little, little bitty providers around the city.
And I think that's the way the state looks at it, at the community or events of, so there's a movement, some of it, but there will be others.
Sure.
And, you know, the part I'm returning, just getting all of our students, you know, into a high quality preschool program, that's the goal that happens.
We work at all, it's a city of the community.
I was just about to ask, are there preschool at the community? There is.
Yeah, they, but we've had some conversations and they have a new person who's kind of over there, who I've had some conversation with. But they run into a lot of the same issues, cost and people and all of those people.
But am I, I'm denying the empty fire station fifty two sitting there would be a very nice location for a preschool and if we could get the city to.
See now slide down the.
Partner with us on that or something. Then we could, you know, we could probably revise the operating, you know, staff.
This fifty two, the one next to the historical museum?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's the asbestos or it's the exhaust from the fire trucks. You cannot use that building.
No, you have to.
It has to be taken down. Yeah, okay. Don't take it down until I get all my stuff out of it.
Yeah, I know. It's a big storage ship.
Yeah.
But hopefully we can do that. I'm curious. The fine arts, we're going to show a fine arts coordinator. Who is that? Do we have one? Or is that a aspirational position?
Actually, we actually have a finance coordinator last year. She's that house in the, she comes and works with the business. And I mean, with the team.
So there's a contracted position? So.
Staff really responds positively to her.
So what is kind of this, this scope of work to kind of help?
Yeah, what does she do?
Yeah.
Point they follow the fine arts, she helped to. Facilitate the performances that have been. As the pack, she's working with her music teachers, the band teachers, the performing arts teachers, the crew that's coming up. I mean, she coordinated all of that. Ordering supplies, sitting down meeting, she's working on working the maps with them.
And defined needs that they had.
Yes. Defining all of the needs that they have.
Is she full time?
No. Just working through the contract hours.
So.
Will she be on again? What should be next year? Oh, she doesn't. Is she on now?
She's on now.
Oh.
So is the, is the goal to. Have her, you know, fill in all. Provide a structure for us going forward and then potentially leave at that point?
Correct. She's available this year.
Yeah.
To work that. I don't know when her availability will be next year, but right now she is creating the organization and the structure for all the fine arts.
Okay, I guess I, yeah, whenever it's appropriate, I'd love to see what her, you know, kind of plan is because. For me, the the fine arts, I mean, we need that, we need a plan. And then we need to figure out, you know, how to fund various portions of it. And I don't think it's maybe we would fund it all in one year. I mean, this is kind of a. Me, what we've always lacked is this, you know, where are we trying to get to here with the arts? And once we have that, then we can start to fund it, maybe as, you know, as we could afford it each year and improve the situation. So, okay, it sounds like that's what.
And so she. And I think we don't have to collect money at the end of our. Performances we have to fund.
I guess the other one I'm seeing, let's see, some of these recommendations, you know, the work group. You know, it's like to hire two full time elementary arts teacher. I mean, that's. That's a nonstarter in our current situation with declining enrollment. So, I mean, we need some, I guess the other aspect, we need some realistic recommendations, not high in sky things. So, but yeah, I'm really happy that it sounds like that's, that's great. She's kind of, because that's what we kind of, I think I've missed is that kind of leadership coordination setting up.
And then, of course, like a set full of those things, like who will be the person that makes sure that that structure, whatever is identified is maintained? Yeah, so it's not just investment of money and time with this individual, it just kind of like.
But it seemed that. Band director at Oster was good at helping facilitate and he was really kind of like the guy. Seemed to have the same insight shape of.
I was going to say, there's a play coming up on January ninth.
I think.
I think it's very important.
Yep.
And she's still coordinating.
But we also have a new, you said, a new drama teacher this year, the first time we've kind of unfortunately cycled through during COVID several, which is unfortunate, but I'm hopefully. One can now stay for a while and, and then can take over some of those. But that's typically in years past, the drama teacher, you kind of coordinate all that stuff. Do we, just a question, have we filled out a capital for the pack updates?
I'm filling that out currently and then asking the city for a letter.
To support.
Okay. Yeah, I emailed representatives of PECME.
Yeah.
To see if, you know, I want to submit it to them or his office first and then see what we're missing.
Right.
But the idea is to ask for fifty percent allocation. So I met with. Ms. Cardenas and the designer got a budget. So I had an updated budget on what the, what the full mail deal is for them. And then, so I'm going to ask for fifty percent of that cost and then hopefully we can get that.
Yeah.
Then move forward with that. So, but the other piece is there's a, we're extending out that timeline because there are some components, equipment pieces that have hugely. So my concern with initially, they're thinking about trying to do. A project done by the end of twenty twenty three, but they said, even if we're going to order the components now, they wouldn't be available. So. I just said it'd be frustrating to do the work.
Yeah.
And then not even be able to use it because we don't have the equipment we need to make sure that it works. And so.
Yeah, that's going to be, because usually they like those capital budgets done.
Within a biennium, so I'm hoping that it's within the two years. That's what I'm, that's what I'm going for. Yeah. Yes, they do want to spend within that timeframe.
I was just trying to follow what you were saying with the fifty percent. You were asking for fifty percent from. Who?
The state. So the state has typically, you can ask for a direct capital allocation. There's a capital budget. And. I've done that successfully with other districts before, but the key to that is usually one of your representatives needs to be a coach.
Okay.
And it just so happens, one of ours is.
Okay.
So that gives us our best opportunity to get a direct.
So fifty percent of the cost of this thing, we're hoping to give them the state.
Correct.
That's it. Thank you.
That's what I'd like to get.
Sounds good.
And typically for those allocations. Representatives like to be able to point to something. So getting the pack done, they can say, hey, look at all this stuff we've done.
That's right.
In the past, I've. In my role, I've tried to make appeals for things like infrastructure. That's not easy to point to. So it usually is not as successful, but. Performing Arts Center is something really easy to.
Yeah, it's, it's community wise.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah.
I guess last question I have is on the. See school bunch. Ongoing student surveys, I don't know, Dennis, do you have any input on the? Quality of the food that.
Yeah, so page this again. I don't, I think so, you're right.
We got a few comments last year that.
I guess what I'm curious about, like, is that a budget priority? And how do we, is that, yeah. Does that seem like a budget priority or just?
Yeah, I should probably.
Kids are eating.
Give a little history of that. So that one originally got on because. Give a little history of that, so that one originally got on because that, this is back in the Trump era where they were gonna cut the traditional standards.
Okay.
That, that everybody had to operate on, and I was saying, we don't want to cut traditional standards. So that's kind of why this one came on, is, it's been, uh, for me, an ongoing, you know, when you talk to students, you know, they always have, you know, some ideas, I mean. Because they, they see food every day, and so they've got lots of ideas about how, and it seems to be an ongoing changing, and so. I think it's important to, you know, keep in touch with them on a fairly consistent basis to find out, you know, what this, you know, your students are interested in, because. You get them started talking, take that foster, and you get them started talking about your food, you know, they'll.
Yeah.
And, and a lot of times, it's, you know, I mean, there's some good solid ideas that we can, and I know Trevor tries to, you know. Yeah, receptive to all that and make some changes, so it's a pretty dynamic, but it's not a, yeah, it's, I would say. Well, except it became a budget issue if we had to have a higher standard segment.
That was the.
Another way in which it could be a, a budget um consideration is thinking about, are we actually providing meals, and again, I know that Trevor, that are culturally responsive.
Yeah.
Um, I feel like that might be the, um, if that was something that we needed to.
And I think you, you get it, that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm actually needing, have a meeting tomorrow with Charles, so.
Ooh, that's a big discussion.
Step one.
Great, yeah, yeah.
Thank you for the input and feedback.
All right, great, so that'll move us to the next part of our agenda, which is the questions only presentations, let's just go down the list, um, I ready. I think kind of one big question I have, isn't necessarily about the, this particular report, um, uh, but I know that there was the, uh, a really big emphasis and push to support. Teachers getting individual um plans, growth plans with students, um, and so kind of more just holistically, how is that gone, and we anticipate um like seeing some movement? That's part one, I guess the little other context to that is like, it's a really short window of improvement of, you know, of actually like implementation phase of anything new. Um, and so I just want to make sure like our, our hopes for growth are realistic, right, uh, based on, okay, yeah.
Hi, sorry, happy parent here.
Yeah.
Yay. So I am really. So I actually texted her at least quite a few, um, and so today I was texting her about her homework yesterday, and said, hey, we're taking the class, it's kind of extension, she's just gonna do. And so she, we had a conversation this morning, and she told me that tonight I jumped thirty-five points in math, so it's, it's.
Okay, okay. And, and you got, both, both she and you got that plan?
So yes, we did get her, um, what was it, the, the teacher, she, so she told me how it works, the conference.
Okay.
How, where she was at, what her plan was, how she was expecting to get there, how she thought she was gonna get there, and then boom.
Can you say thirty-five points, are you talking about scale point?
I would have to look at my tab, all I know that thirty-five points is great.
I like that. I don't know.
Funny, like the, the goal was like twenty-five within the quarter, I think it was.
Oh, that's, that's like one great level.
Yeah.
Which is, you know, in what, half the year.
Wow.
That would be.
Take it back, it's definitely enough time, yeah, wow, thank you for sharing that, that's, that's really. I can't wait to see like the successes that other folks have had.
I was curious about the, I'm always curious about comparing I ready to the smarter Dallas, you know, and I noticed that one that's. We can hope generally that I ready is pretty good at theater, but smarter down, but there's this huge intended for you to foster massive difference between, you know, the SBA and the I ready. Do you have any? I mean, I have my own speculation of that, but what do you think?
I'm going to speak to motivation.
Yeah, okay, that's, that was, that's my theory.
The motivation is just different and different than that.
Yeah.
And so we are trying to work to understand um how to motivate. Representative, and I was in this yesterday, lost student motivation and. Internal, um, external, what is it going to take to motivate anyone to understand the why they do what they do? And if we can. Understand how to make that happen, I think people will show up different for the different assessments, whether smarter balance, he is a team. Um, yeah, yeah.
Well, and also, I think, I don't know, I ready, there's always been this thing, you know, foster, that the running start students typically don't take, did you take I ready this time? Yeah, so the, so the running starts, so we're, we're kind of eliminating a lot of the high scorers out of the path, so anyway.
Is there a way that they could be encouraged to?
So, yeah, I think.
Are we talking about?
Asking you.
Yeah.
We're talking specifically about running start, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
And taking.
I mean, I guess on a bigger sense of, like, the general motivation of students, I think we're gonna need to talk. One-on-one with a lot more students, especially students who are struggling, who we want to consider like the, the A point student, but I think. We need to get those perspectives, and it's not gonna be easy to implement it, because it's different for everyone, but. When it just start talking to them, if we really want to get these scores up and just to understand these students, because. I mean, it's hard, we don't, we don't know what we're doing, we don't know what we should do, because we don't know what we need to do, so it's like, I don't even, I personally. I've heard stories of students who say why they don't really put a lot of effort into schooling, because they don't feel like they belong, or because they don't feel like. They need to, because they don't find a reason to, so. So how do we help them find that reason is the thing that we should be looking to?
Yeah, I think that's true, whether it's I ready or any regular classroom work, it's really making those connections and then. So I ready, again, it's just one tool that we have, and just give some indicators about what we have. It's, I think it's a helpful tool.
As listening to some, some podcast today about math instruction and. You know. I mean, to kind of transform how we do that instruction, to make it more engaging, to the tendency, road, doing things, and that doesn't work the way to be students, and so. There's, anyway.
That's why we had that fun thing at, at the start of school, that fun presentation, math, whatever it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I guess the one thing I did want to, in the positive, which was we brought out in this. Let's take it really, show it together, that is the fact that, which is, we're celebrating that. You know, there wasn't a lot of, I always talk about this idea of summer slide, where students forget everything, they learn to come back, and fall and have to start all over again. And the indications are here that, that there wasn't a connection, which is kind of. Amazing, although the test was from, I guess, like. Uh, April, May to September, so it wasn't. You know, there was instruction going on, hopefully, in May and June, and then beginning of September and some summer school, so where exactly, what exactly happened in there to, you know, keep. The scores going down more, I'm not sure, but it's a good thing. And I am, I would be interested in actually hearing, I know most teachers, you know, they started to fall, have to kind of, okay, where are the students, but they probably go back and reteach a lot of things, particularly in math. So that everybody gets up to their thing level, um, and if they actually were able to get through that quicker in this year, would be interesting to know, because. And then for us to try and figure out what exactly happened, I'm not sure exactly where we can, you know, if there's something we learned from that. Whether summer school was that good, or whether there was just better instruction late, or I don't, anyway.
I think.
It's good, whatever it was.
I think it means interesting to ask the teachers why they think.
Yeah.
There wasn't a summer slide.
Exactly.
Just get narratives from the teachers.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, because of course, as, as with any data point we've been talking about, right, the, the numbers are only as good as what we learned from them, you know, how, what we take behaviors or ideas from, from times that they do well and implement those more. Wait, uh, the MTSS report. This is a question I should have asked before, and I didn't, because it actually didn't come to mind until before, so can, I can get the answer to it later, just want to put it on the radar, I'd be curious to hear more about. How readiness was determined uh for the pilot uh group that's, that's taking place, so I know that there was some work done last year to, and those were the, um, you know, the two groups that are identified as ready. Just a little bit more curiosity about how that determination was made and, um, yeah. Unless you can expect me. Great.
Yeah, it's exactly the same question.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, just looking at it, I would say, you know, or like, if you have the higher. So I would think that you would start there, but.
Yeah, I imagine that would take some time to, to get back, so appreciate you looking into it. Otherwise, I'm just, I'm kind of excited again, like most things, to figure out, to, to see um the strength of something like this, when we're really implementing it, like similarly, um, and have that cross-team collaboration as well. Um, there's so much, of course, value to those professional learning communities at festivals, so I'm just excited to see how that pilot um kind of really creates that structure that we can use across our schools.
One question I had, so. Now, I've been asking this for a while, is, you know, what are the patterns that the care teams are seeing in the buildings? So you said, okay, the concerns that, you know, reading, writing that, I mean, that's the reason a student gets referred to a care team, but what I want to know is what's the. What are, what are patterns in terms of root cause, a student not having, not able to, um, you know, move ahead with math or reading, whatever it is. And then the question, if you might get referred to a care team, so what are the patterns they're seeing? Some home issues are there, you know, different mental health, I mean, what are the patterns that these care teams are seeing that we're trying to?
True, yeah.
So you want root cause.
Pardon me? Yeah, root cause, yeah, yeah, that they're seeing, any, I mean, you know, you don't need names, if you're just, if they're seeing patterns that we can, you know, potentially apply some more resource to. Something.
And can we have an extended conversation about care change someday? Because we've had them for years, and then they have to wait eight to twelve weeks before they can meet a bad child, and then they have suggestions of what to do to help that child. So then they have additional time that they have to wait for assistance. The length of time it takes to get help for your student is. It's not a, it's, it's not helpful. So my concern is the whole care team philosophy of, how can we make it more. Expediated more so that it serves our students faster.
And you have someone with.
Good, thank you, I really appreciate that, because. A child shouldn't have to fail that long before they get. That would be an interesting discussion that maybe have a staff. Is that PSDSD work also being supported, or is that a different funding?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
So. Was the word like care?
No. For like the contractor doing with them to do the MTSS work. Okay, with it. And hopefully that's more of like a one-time investment to then create that structure, right, with PSDSD, as far as like the financial component, one-time investment. Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure, thank you. Okay, questions on the smart goals? The twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two smart goals, not our current smart goals that we are uh working on, did you want to provide any additional? On the shirt produce?
Yeah, I mean, uh, so these are basically what we're looking at through the district improvement plan as, um, we've talked about in the past, like. We, for the upcoming, um. Strategic plan, we plan on having smart goals in each of the areas that we have that are a little meatier for these, so these are really just around the I ready and graduation rates, um. So these may seem a little bit thin, but I think they still provide us with information about how we're tracking and improving, which is what we want to do. I think with information like from I ready, we'll have other data points that will give us some of that timeliness, like to the smart goal. And I think with the strategic plan, school improvement plans, district improvement plans, it's what's kind of in the whole structure around. Implementation phases of things, when you expect to see things, and when, when that should happen, as well as a budgetary impact on that, because I think there's been much in the past. Fairly, I know, uh, director of our sometimes, like, sometimes we fund something, seems to be effective, then we cut it, if we can show that there's. Progress associated with the investments that we're making, I think it helps out in making those future decisions, not prioritization, but. Um, and or shift the priorities that we may have, so I think uh strategic plans, or permanent plans, whatever plans you have, they. It's important to have some consistency with realizing that you may need to reprioritize based on the effectiveness of something that's coming, or. The amount of money that you have to continue to invest in something or not be able to, most of the time, so that's the goal. Um, I would expect smart goals for twenty-two, twenty-three, when we review those, to be much meatier, will have more data, have differences in there for budgetary.
So, so the attendance rate chart is just blows my mind, because it's so bad, if I, if I read it correctly.
We're reading it correctly, I think one of the things that we should take into consideration is that we will come.
Yeah.
And that many people were nervous about sending their children back.
Okay, thank you for bringing that in, yeah.
And so.
Okay, so this year should look different.
It should.
Yeah.
Wow.
What kind of a scratch for me is we have this high graduation rate, pardon me.
Yeah.
Chronically absent range, and, but there wasn't much summer slide.
Yeah.
Yeah. Kind of got me scratching my head.
Yeah. I, I, I wonder, not necessarily something that, it makes me wonder, like, if the majority of these uh chronically absent instances did happen at the beginning of the year, or even like in January, when we were kind of coming back. From the holiday, when those times maybe, you know, COVID may have been heightened, or anxiety's rung, or it may have been heightened, um, but again, not necessarily worth. It, it's probably just worth, you know, seeing what the data looks like next year in compared.
And the thing with something like this is always looking at the number of students, which we have in here, compared to a percentage of like the, the overall actions is, so how much are they making up of that to the.
Well, I think everybody, immune systems were not built that, yeah. We had more illness than our house, and we're normally real. I did talk to Ms. Turner today, and, or yesterday, she was very grateful for the work you're helping her do with the truancy stuff, she is just, she was. Uh, praising your, you're holding her accountable, yeah, so that's great. Any questions, comments? Smart goals. Hey, all right, so that brings us to the action item portion of our agenda, as well as moved on the line, so I'll accept the motion to approve policies sixteen, ten, thirty-two, thirty-one, and forty-two, eighteen. So move. Any discuss, discussion questions?
Um, I guess I just wanna reiterate. Um, I guess I just wanna reiterate the question came up about, you know, where are we gonna get the language access? We is on. Coordinator position. Like I said, my reading of the bill is that since we have more. Seventy languages that the state should be funding this position, but yeah, that's something for. That happens, or if it doesn't happen.
Continue an issue.
Okay, all in favor of approving these three policies? Um, the next is the approval of out of state travel for the California Association of Violent Education. All in favor, oh sorry, any questions, friends? All in favor? Uh, next is approval of the RFP for champions.
I I was in on that discussion and I did agree that champions was superior to the other RFP. Um, so I'm glad you're going this way.
Um, I I think I just needed a little bit of clarity. I know that there were multiple RFPs that went out. Uh, two out of school time providers, one I believe was more for enrichment type programming, the one was before and after school. Is that incorrect? Is that true? And then which RFP is this one fulfilling?
Before, during, after, so.
Okay, so there's still an active RFP, RFP for um before and after school programming.
Yes, and the whole of when that particular one is that I was trying to be very intentional in getting all voices. And in our original um process, when we did our first round of scoring, um, we didn't have any parents. Or community, there was some that was supposed to show up and there was one that did show up, but his parent was, excuse me, his student was. In the program and so I didn't want that bias.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so I was like, thank you, I'm sorry. So I'm just being very intentional to try to get those additional voices. So I'm really trying to get it within the next two weeks because I'm already behind on the ball, but I'm just trying to get all voices. And I have reached out to everybody, for all the companies that have replied and they actually appreciate that response, but I'm just trying to wrap it up, so.
And how is that different than the champions one?
I think the one, so from ours, um, it was just the before and after school care, which, you know, they do have. Um, the social emotional component and um those those in homework help. Um, and then I think Dr. Boris shade can speak to hers, I think hers was more on a lot of the.
So you're, does every school have that one and this one?
At some point, yes. Right now is the before and after school at the elementary level.
But it's not champions? It's something else?
Right now, it is champion.
But there's no people. So just thinking about like out of school time providers, I mean, they have different, you know, emphasis is in their programming. And so there are organizations that do before and after school program that is, you know, about enrichment and that. You know, that social learning community, all those types of things versus a.
Yeah.
Well. No.
No.
Versus more the academic focus that might be more like a focus tutoring program. Sorry, childcare rubs me the wrong way. But yeah, yeah, so just different kind of scopes of of kind of expertise, I would say, those different programs.
So this RFP that we just approved is just enhancing what they are doing?
It could enhance, I mean, could be more of the same. The thing that they responded to that they would do with any RFP and. Um, one of the things that we're looking for is someone to help with increasing, you know, when we talk about our student achievement. How are they going to help in that aspect as well?
Okay.
So yes, everything that you read.
Yeah, alright, yeah, I I'm totally into that. I just couldn't figure out what this other one was.
This may not be true, so totally correct or wrong. Is one more directly tied to the twenty first century grant funding and the other one may or may not be? Or are they both tied directly to the twenty first century grant funding?
Oh, neither, oh.
Yeah, we have a a couple of different buckets to work with, just because of the um, the work that's being done, right? That you're mark.
I may be really interested to see, so that you will look at I read scores based on the students, because I can tell you. Trying to ask for that for fifteen years that that, you know, look at the academic progress from our after school programs that we could figure out where they were. So I'm really looking forward to that. So we do have a a marker in I ready or Skyward or something that said the student participated in after school program. Oh, you have their names? Okay, okay, alright.
Thank you for taking that time to help us understand. Um, great, so I'm all in favor of approving this RFP. Um, okay, so next is approval of the professional services agreement for the executive coach. Um, any questions, comments?
Is this just for the remainder of the year then or?
I appreciated the the outline, of course. Thank you for that. Um, that makes me always feel better about approving a lump sum of money, right? Knowing the ways it was just gonna benefit you, um, to then in turn benefit our district. Okay, all in favor? Um, next is approval of overnight field trip for gear up.
Someone.
Any questions, comments? Okay, in favor of approval? Um, next is the approval of the overnight filter for the twenty twenty three WIAA state cheerleading championships. Uh, second, uh, any questions, comments?
I saw them last night at the basketball game. They're great.
Oh, cool.
I've seen them at football, uh, football games and basketball games. They got a lot of energy. They're not a big group, but they put out a lot of. Uh, cheer.
There are more injuries from cheerleading than from any other sport.
No kidding? I mean, pretty high.
Yeah.
That's true.
They're really good leader.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As always, it makes all the difference.
Yeah, and they played Renton last night, so that was a spirited game.
Uh, alright, and then, oh, we didn't approve it. Uh, all in favor? I think that would be silly. Um, okay, then lastly is approval of the human resources staffing report. All in favor? Alright, so that takes us down to our final opportunity for public comment. Um, so if you are joining virtually, um, you can raise your hand or put your name in the chat. I'm gonna make an assumption here that there's no one in person that wants to provide public comment. Okay. I'll give just a moment uh for anyone to find that button. Alright, seeing none then, uh, we will officially move to adjourn the meeting. All in favor.
Everybody.
Got some signatures.